Call meeting order six o'clock. Five to two, Mr. Leonard, you can leave the place of allegiance, sir.
Sure.
Let your legions signify the United States of America and in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on in, y'all. Don't be scared. This time, Tony Davis from B Church. You will provide us with identification, please, sir.
Yes. Father, we come before you with a heart of humility. And Father, we just thank you for bringing us together for this important endeavor. We pray, Father, your blessings, this peace be upon each attendee here today. And Father, we need your guidance, your direction in this meeting. Father, I pray that we would honor each other here today with respect. And God, I pray that this day, each person that speaks would speak in honesty and truth. And those of us that listen, that we would hear with an open heart and an open mind. Father, we thank you that we can just lift you up here today. And we pray, Father, that decisions made here would be led by godly wisdom and knowledge. And Father, we pray for the success of this meeting by your instruction and your direction. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, this time you have an agenda before you as presented. Entertained motion to adopt the agenda.
Move the adopt the agenda as distributed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. Next is the consent agenda, which does consist of a couple of components. Entertained motion to approve.
Move approve consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. Unfinished business. Item number one, consideration approval for alcohol license to sell wine by the package. Woodbridge General Store. This is going to be continued due to an applicant amendment. Ms. Goldner, do you have anything?
Yes, the clients were not able to be here this evening, but we have been speaking with them and working through their application, and they have decided to amend their application. And since it has not been voted on yet, we can continue this process instead of them having to start all the way over from the beginning. I believe what they are going to be changing their request to is wine specialty shop.
Thank you. Counsel, I have a motion to continue or table as presented.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, under unfinished business, Pinnacle R.A. Holdings LLC ceases assist appeal for 191 Interstate South Drive, Jasper, Georgia. Joint agreement to be continued until 4/1/24, per the city attorney. Ms. Goldner, have you witnessed it? Do you have anything?
No, we've been working with the applicant on site plan review and to work through some of the issues involved. And so they have asked for an extension to continue to work through those items.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, entertain a motion to table, continue as presented.
So moved.
In a second.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. New business. Item number one, pending of Captain James Weaver with the Jasper Fire Department, pending of Sergeant Matt Bagley with the Jasper Fire Department. Chief Sherr, you'll come forward, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here tonight. We are pending two new officers, Sergeant Matt Bagley and Captain James Weaver, James Weaver, excuse me, Jim Weaver. Sergeant Bagley has been in his role since before Christmas. We just haven't been able to do an official pending yet, so we're glad to do that tonight. We're going to bring him up first. He's on shift, and whenever he's out, he's going to go out the door. We'll bring him up. Come on up, Sergeant. We're going to pin him tonight. His wife is a healthcare worker, and of course, she's out of work, so we're going to do the items of pending that's on work Friday, but not for him.
Don't make him busy now.
Big stick on three. He's official now. Well, you step right over here, and then we'll get Captain Weaver, and then we'll get pictures. Captain Weaver? His wife is here to pin him tonight. I'm sure he is thrilled. That means we can get a stick, sir.
Do as I'm told.
Captain Weaver's been in the fire service for almost 40 years. October will be four decades of service. He served in about every capacity you can serve in the fire service, and we're pleased to have him. He's our new training officer for Jasper Fire Department.
Counsel, we're going to take some pictures with the new officers. For the fire department.
Okay, big smiles. One, two, three. Thank you. Thanks.
Y'all, congratulations. Thank you, guys. Counsel, back under new business, item number two, consideration approval of resolution 2024-04, recognizing the 25th anniversary of the Jasper Farmers Market and declaring April 6, 2024, as Jasper Farmers Market Day. On this, I have these comments.
Yes. So the mayor has let the cat out of the bag. This year is the 25th anniversary of the Jasper Farmers Market. They have been a fixture here in Jasper for 25 years, as I just said. They have provided their list or their schedule of events for this summer. Opening day for the market is April the 6th, which is a Saturday, and they will run Saturdays from 7:30 until 12 noon through September the 28th. There will be no market due to the marble festival on October the 5th. And then they will slightly change their hours from 9 until 1, starting October the 12th through December the 7th. And for those of you that need your Farmers Market fix, they are also there on Wednesdays in the park and ride lot, June the 19th through August the 28th, from 11 until 1:00. And so I ask counsel to please approve those event dates so that they may use Lee Newton Park for the 25th season of the Jasper Farmers Market.
Counsel, I want to call for two motions. One is to approve the dates as presented by Ms. Goldner.
So moved.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. And for resolution 2024-04, entertaining motion for approval as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. This time, I'll read the resolution for the Farmers Market. Ms. Jenny, if you want to step on up, I'll come down there and bring you with you. Ms. Jenny is the Farmers Market Manager, and I'm glad she's with us this evening. We have the original two, correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Come on down, Ms. Jenny. Thank you for everything that you did. It's been 25 years in the making. I love seeing quite a change.
Not to be official after 25 years. But 25 years to be official.
You put a few years of hard work into this. We thank you for what you do. A resolution of the City of Jasper recognizing the 25th anniversary of the Jasper Farmers Market and declaring April 6, 2024, as Jasper Farmers Market Day. Whereas, the Jasper Farmers Market has provided an events permit application for the 2024 market season to be held at Lee Newton Park, starting April 6, 2024, through December 7, 2024. And whereas, the Jasper Farmers Market will celebrate its 25th anniversary of operation in 2024. And whereas, the City of Jasper recognizes the vital role that Farmers Markets play in bringing communities together and supporting the livelihoods of millions of people in the United States. And whereas, the Farmers Market serves a significant educational site and bridges between urban and rural communities. And whereas, Farmers Market helped to improve the health and wellness of people in the United States by providing equitable access to nutritious foods. And whereas, the City of Jasper recognizes the unique and indispensable role that our Farmers Market play in supporting food access, bolstering local economies, promoting healthy communities, and fostering sustainable farming. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jasper recognizes the Jasper Farmers Market's 2024 season as the 25th anniversary of the Jasper Farmers Market and declares April 6, 2024, as Jasper Farmers Market Day.
Congratulations.
I just thank you.
Absolutely.
For letting us use the parking lot all these years.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate it.
All right, counsel, under new business, item number three, consideration approval of alcohol license by GFY Hospitality LLC DVA Sideline Grill. Lindsey Williams, finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. GYF Hospitality LLC DVA Sideline Grill has made an application to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises at 800 Noah Drive. This was formerly the fax location. Their background check had no discrepancies and has met all the requirements. We're asking tonight if you could please approve the alcohol license for the beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you have the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, the liquor license for GFY Hospitality be approved.
Motion, you have a second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Item number four, consideration approval to purchase 2024 Chevrolet Silverado Day Chevrolet. Chief Sherr.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm bringing to you one of our 2024 capital improvement projects, which is the purchase of a response vehicle. This vehicle would be for Assistant Chief, Assistant Chief Norton. The reason we are bringing this to you now is we've got a vehicle that is our needs, and it's actually big delivery soon. And also, we've put on our training officer position, which a vehicle will filter down to them, because their role is to respond to structured fires and capacity safety officer, which puts us in a need for a vehicle. And we've already identified this as a capital improvement project. We obtained three quotes. Actually, we obtained four quotes. I'll put them in your agenda packet, and the speaker committee for recommendations. Committee recommended us bring it to you for further discussion and proof or denial. The total budget for the project is $69,400. That includes a proposed purchase of a vehicle for $49,746. And the remainder is upholding costs, which is the boarding package, lights, sirens, radio, and equipment that goes on the vehicle. Do you have any questions for me, counsel?
Counsel, this time, you have the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, hey, I'm really excited that, you know, when we did get quotes and we looked at some regional businesses in our community. So thank you for giving some feedback in front of the organization here in our community. So excited to see that.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Item number five, consideration approval of matching funds for FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. Chief Sherr.
We've discussed this previously, but AFG is rapidly approaching. The application window is already open. That's assistance to firefighters grant through FEMA. This year, our project is shifting a little bit. Previous year, we've been asked for SCBA units, which is self-infectable breathing apparatus. But along with our capital improvement project and our equipment rotations that we've been working on, we've started to improve our inventory there and acquire new ones, which makes us less desirable for funding for that through AFG. So this year, we're going to attempt to go after compliant radios, which would be 25 radios, demo rolling. This is something that is a large purchase just for our department. The project total would be $320,180.41. AFG and FEMA require us to offer a 5% match. I'm coming to you tonight to request 16,010 dollars in matching funds. I would not anticipate these funds need to be actually utilized until late in the year, possibly beginning of next year.
Is again chief, did go through committee?
Yes, this did go through committee.
Counsel, you have the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, purchase be approved?
Motion, second.
So moved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. Item number six, consideration approval of new five-year contract for the Two-Curved Flock Cameras. Chief Dawkins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Comes to you tonight for flock camera contract. December 2022, we entered into a two-year contract with them. We still have the two cameras up and in work effectively. The flock is going up on price, so as everything else, they offered us a five-year contract at the same price it is now. And if we decide to buy any new cameras in that five-year, we're getting at the $2,500 camera instead of 3,000. So I'm asking y'all's approval for the new contract. I have spoken length with Mr. Siphon about it, and I don't have anything else to say. Pretty good contract, pretty standard.
Fantastic.
I'll repeat, contract is, you know, for a foreign contract, we can live with it.
Fantastic. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief. Item number seven, consideration approval of Jifa Clean Water State revolving loan number CW2024007.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we come towards the conclusion of our master cleaning process that Goodwin Mills and Kaywood has been assisting us through, I think I've mentioned several times before, we have already started using some of the tools that they have put into place for us while we evaluate new development coming in. A part of their task was also to help us develop a new capital improvements plan for the next five years and beyond on projects, kind of directing where that priority should go to instead of just picking projects that may not actually be the priority. They have helped us identify several, and when I say several, I do mean several, critically important rehab projects that we must set as priorities. And two projects on the wastewater side of the utility have to do with aging infrastructure within the sewer basin that travels through our Town Creek Lift Station and through our Mineral Springs Lift Station. There are capacity limitations within this basin. It is a huge basin that goes from the hospital to the north across 515. It encompasses Walmart, the Ingalls area, all the way along Philadelphia over to Main Street, and then back down. So it covers a large area of the city, and it also transforms a lot of sewer through that area. As I mentioned, there were capacity limitations within this basin, and that is going to prohibit additional development without resolution, and it's also going to leave us susceptible to additional overflows and spills within this basin. The two projects that we finalized as needing to occur first are a new master sewage lift station that would actually replace Town Creek and Mineral Springs. And so it would be a large station built with additional capacity for future development. It would also take care of upsizing some force main, about 2,500 feet of new force main, and about 2,500 feet of new upsized gravity sewer main coming into the station. That project has been estimated at around $3 million. We also have a project that's kind of a complement to that project, and that is to address the INI, or the inflow and infiltration issues, or the health of our collection system. So all of the gravity sewer, all of the manholes, all of that kind of collection system that's coming into this basin and into these two man, or these two lift stations, need some work. They need lining. We need to replace manholes. We have several areas where we are taking on water that we don't need to be treating at the wastewater plant, and that's creating bottlenecks within our collection system. And also, it's eating up the capacity that we have available at the treatment plant. So we'll end up with a newly rehabbed plant and still not have the capacity available to grant two other projects because we're treating all of this additional water. This project is estimated at a million and a half, and it would involve lining, replacement of manholes, replacement of main, likely some upsizing. I think GMC's first, what they would like to do first is do some cleaning and televising of the collection system so that we can see kind of where, pinpoint down those areas where we need to do things. We had done some smoke testing a couple of years ago, and so that worked, and that, the results of that are being used as a part of the evaluation process and what needs to be taken care of first. We reached out to Jifa last fall when we knew that these two projects were coming up and that we were going to need to do some financing for this. Jifa offers clean water state revolving loan projects, as well as drinking water state revolving loan projects, and they are typically offered at long-term, 20 years, sometimes more, and low interest rate. And these projects have a conservation aspect to them, and so we are able to take advantage of a discount on that interest rate because these projects will eliminate issues within the collection system, make things more efficient. So we've been offered 2.36% for 20 years on this project as well. So I am asking this evening for counsel's approval to go ahead and sign the documents with Jifa so we can get these two important projects started. We have gotten our opinion letter from the accountants, and so we have that. Mr. Siphon has looked at all of the documentation, the loan agreement itself, and has approved that processing.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you have the floor for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve purchase.
Motion approval of Jifa Clean Water State revolving loan CW2024007. Have a motion? Have a second?
So moved.
Any discussion, counsel?
This was discussed at the enterprise committee and moved to full council after discussion.
Can you share with us what the, oh, there's some comments.
Yes, if you'll give me just one moment. Okay, so without reading the entire letter, I'll read the part that I think you are probably interested in the most. As of the date of the letter, there were no significant changes in funded, balanced, retained earnings in the water sewage fund as compared with the net position of December 31st, 2022. Excuse me. More was there any significant decrease in revenues of the City of Jasper compared with the corresponding period in the preceding year, except for changes in recurring or non-recurring federal or state grants? Let's see here. This letter actually does not say very much. Lindsey has also asked them for that opinion of debt ratio as well. I will tell you that Jifa did look at the same calculations, though we had actually asked for an additional amount above this for a couple of additional projects. And that was what was factored into our 2024 budget projections. The ask, or the official ask that went before Jifa was significantly less, about a third of that amount of the original amount. And so that did, you know, it made our position better, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel? We have a motion, second. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Another step towards investing in our infrastructure.
Yes, thank you.
Item number eight, consideration approval of Kubota Track Loader for the Water Utilities Department. Ms. Goldner.
Yes, so I also have a vehicle request this evening that was a capital project for the Water Utilities Department. We have shifted that request, though, a bit to a piece of equipment that can be used at the wastewater plant instead of an actual vehicle to replace a vehicle that is now out of service. We are needing a new Kubota Track Loader, and that is used at the plant in order to move those sludge containers, the trailers around, which is a pretty important function of the plant. Once it goes through the drying beds, you do have to get that sludge to a place where it can be loaded up and hauled off to landfills once it's dried. We were using an old track hoe, which is beyond its useful life. It will cost significantly more to repair it than to replace something new. It will cost significantly more to repair it and to replace something new. While we had not anticipated this particular purchase, as I mentioned, we had budgeted for a new vehicle at the plant. And so I am asking for authorization to kind of redirect those funds, excuse me, to the purchase of this track loader. When Charles first brought this to me last week, he had gone and looked for leasing prices because he figured, hey, we did not budget for this. Maybe this is something that we could look at leasing and then extending the payments out and doing one final balloon payment then. And as we got to looking through the budget and what we had asked for this year, we felt that purchasing outright would just be the better way to go. And with Nelson Tractor, who is, who this particular quote, the final quote that you have in your packet, we are on Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, and so is Kubota. We did get roughly another nine thousand dollars off of the price that I had presented to the Enterprise Committee. Excuse me. And so that final price comes out at seventy-one thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. So I think there was some concern that maybe we had not gotten enough quotes. We have gotten enough quotes. They were actually leasing the unit. And then with being able to go through Kubota on the Sourcewell, we were able to take advantage of that additional pricing discount. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
You're good. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve in the amount of seventy-one thousand five sixty-two forty-one with a quarter attached.
Second move.
Motion to have second.
Second.
Motion second, any discussions?
Again, this was discussed at the Enterprise Committee and passed to the full council for approval.
Yes. And that trackhoe that you said is to be on compare or repair, is that, that's not used in our street department? They have their own tractor over there, or is it kind of shared?
So they have their own tractor. And what had been approved with the 2024 budget was a new tractor as well for mowing with the sidearm. Obviously, the departments work well together, and we share equipment and move equipment as it is needed from department to department. The Public Works Department, though, is going to need their own equipment because once summer hits and we are rapidly approaching that part, it will be an all-hands-on-deck mowing adventure throughout the summer. And so the plant needs to have their own equipment. They are constantly moving these sludge containers when the plant is really rolling. They are processing through the belt press. And with the additional capacity that we'll be taking on when the plant is fully expanded, then we will have need for this equipment to be there all the time.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Development, Public Administration, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Jackson.
Well, obviously, a lot of exciting things happening. Despite the public opinion, we were able to get through the rock over on the El Lawson property, and now it's been replaced with gravel and tarso. And so that project continues to move along. We've had an abundance of issues related to runoff problems in the handling of runoff water. And I think the department has been able to work through most of those to at least some degree of satisfaction. And some of the projects that we approved quite some time ago are now starting to re-energize and to the northeast corner of Philadelphia, I believe, will start, will be underway in some short order. I think that's for the most part what's going on as far as we're thinking about.
Financial Administration, Mr. Luth, Ms. Kennedy?
Financial audit has, excuse me, it has not started, or start tomorrow. Was supposed to start today, but because of our meeting tonight, we didn't want to give up this room to the auditors, so it was moved to tomorrow. As normal, audit will take some time and we'll get a report for the due date, which I believe is May 30th. Is that right?
You said at our due meeting, presented at our due meeting.
Okay. So that will be ready for. Continue to look at updating policies, particularly the vehicle policy, and hope to bring that to council in the near future.
Enterprise Committee, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Luth.
We continue to work with EPD on legalizing the East Star Mines for storage, although that seems to have stalled somewhat. We, if, we believe that the new well filling exploration that is, we've been working on for nearly across the year, we believe that's the one before EPD this month to allow that. Basically, we had done some studies to determine where we might go well, and unfortunately, it fell within the one hundred feet or yards, I don't recall, of a stream. And across the district, they'd allowed that. And I think they have loosened those restrictions, but it still has to go before their committee or their board, and that's happened this week. I think we're projected for 2024 for our wastewater treatment plant. Isn't that right, Jim?
End of year.
To finish that project up, I think related to that project, we also had a visit with, about concerning of making our building here handicapped accessible, which is a requirement of the USDA loans and grants. Without going into the details, I think the news was a little on the favorable side that we were not going to have to do as much as we initially thought, which is good news. And I guess that's all I have.
Jim?
The work on the water treatment plant continues.
And as mentioned, we anticipated this moment, date of completion around December end of the year this year. Parks and Properties? Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Mayor, this time Doris Wiggins Park's coming quite along. Won't be long before it's finished. They're working on a head trails and getting ready to do the kiosks. It's really coming along nicely. Get a chance, we need to go by and look at it. City Park, we want to thank the Joe George Public Safety Training's mandated class for painting the bridge. They did a very good job, thanks to them. Still waiting on the delivery of the bathrooms. We did get a little look at hopefully what the siding would look like. Got marble split face, looks pretty, pretty nice. Still got a little, you know, still got a little bit more to get done on that. Lee Newton, still waiting for the engineers to get back with us with their updated plans on the lectures, so. Or we're at, Matt, you have anything else?
Jasper City Park, it was just good to see some boys out there playing baseball. So First Mountain City Dragons Baseball Association's been out there practicing. Full support. Did want to bring up some awareness. I was told that someone kicked in the door to the bathrooms up there, so wanted to flag you for that, Kim, and let you be aware. But we're excited to be up there, even using the field, so. And excited too about Doris Wiggington and getting that park open. Had a lot of neighbors talk to me about it today, actually, and waiting for it to open. So excited to get that to offer it here.
Awesome. Speaking of Doris Wiggington Park, social media was shared today from that park's social media site that the updates are near completion. Be on the lookout for ribbon cutting and a grand opening date. Restrooms in downtown, you had mentioned earlier. We are looking at April, April, and that's the date. So that project is coming right along. Much anticipated, well needed. All right, Committee, Public Safety, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, really, the only update, Anne, you want to give it? Yeah, we added a little extra security at the municipal court there, so they were able to purchase a metal detector. Came with a wand, they went with this option just because of ease of being able to move that around. So it's not in the way at all times. So I'm excited to be offering that extra level of security during court.
All right, council. This time on our agenda, we do have executive session listed for personnel. Intertake a motion, we go to executive session personnel. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Both say? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here with us this evening.